And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is called the order. On the present. Item number four.
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to recess the question. Do you want to open the sideboard?
Second.
This is my question Warren saying my question is Jean Greco to recess commissioners being an open sideboard. All in favor?
Aye.
Sideboard.
Sideboard.
This is called the order. On the present. Item number three.
Motion to approve the minutes of May thirteenth, sideboard.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Vannick saying by Commissioner Warren to approve item three, approval of the minutes for the May thirteenth, sideboard. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Still carry. Item four.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four, so should I have your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item four on the agenda to eliminate the full-time union position of accounts payable, payroll check processing in Commissioner's office per recommendation of our staff. Questions or comments? Yes?
So who's going to do that work?
It's covered under item five. All in favor?
Aye.
Item five.
A motion to create full-time union position of accounts payable, payroll check processing in the Treasurer's office at the present hourly rate of nineteen seventy-seven per hour benefits according to the collective bargaining unit and government mandated requirements per the recommendation of Treasurer Kathy Benedict.
I'll second that.
Wait, wait, wait. My concern is. I want to make sure we're doing this right.
That's why there's a note there.
Yeah, I see the note.
Job's not changing, who it's reporting to is always changing.
Which I don't believe we should eliminate after right, should have read five before we did four. We eliminate a position, so that position no longer exists.
Right.
Now we're creating a new one. Well, I don't really think we are. I just think we're transferring this person from one to another, I'm afraid.
But I don't have that position in my office.
Okay, we're gonna give it to you. But I don't think we do it by creating a no full time. It's a play on words with the union contracts that I am concerned about.
That's okay, do it however you think.
I just want it to be right, it's not that I'm against it getting done.
No, I'm under it.
You guys understand what I'm saying?
I'll withdraw my motion, motion number four.
No, you're right.
Can I withdraw now?
I think what we want to say is, is we want to transfer.
But we need to.
Not eliminate it, we just want to transfer.
The position from.
That position from the Commissioner's office to the Treasurer's office. At the same rate of pay with all the same benefits.
Okay.
So, did you just make that motion?
Yeah, if you remember what I said.
I'll second that.
Okay, this is, this is something new though, because this, doing it this way has never been done this way before.
Well, that's because we're getting smarter with the way we do things, because we try and do things the right way and the union says, no, you can't do that. You just created a new position, so the me too clause says, you gotta roll it all the way back to the starting position, which we don't want to happen.
I defer to you because I do not, I am familiar with any of the six union contracts.
You guys.
You're fine, we got a motion.
What was the motion again?
I've got it. Motion to transfer the, the full-time union position of accounts payable, payroll processing from the Chief Clerk's office to the Treasurer's office.
At the same rate of pay with all the benefits according to the collecting bargaining agreement and government mandated requirements.
Okay, so does this mean we're just totally eliminating motion four?
Yes.
We don't need that at all, so that's out.
Right.
Okay.
Questions or comments, yes?
What are the government mandated requirements? What we should call government mandate.
Obamacare is one of them.
So, health insurance, Obamacare?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
That's the only, that and unemployment, workers' comp.
Okay, so was there a second?
Yes.
And who was that?
That was Mary Ann. Mike made the motion, Mary Ann made the second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to approve item six is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Treasurer Vannick to approve item six on the agenda to increase the rate of pay for the full-time union position of second deputy treasurer from eleven eighty-two to eleven ninety-two per hour due to additional responsibilities backup payroll check processing. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any public comment on Sally board? Yes?
And when you mentioned Obamacare, can you explain how that's working out for the county employees? Are you noticing it's costing anymore for medical care under Obamacare as before?
Not this time. Item seven?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to approve item seven to adjourn the salary board, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners meeting is reconvened?
Yes.
Item six?
Yeah, item six.
How about five?
Five, I'll make a motion to approve. Item number five is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item five on the agenda to approve the minutes of the June tenth, twenty fifteen, commissioners being, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to approve item six on the agenda to ratify and approve the electronic transfers and cash disbursements, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven with the, we need to add the dates for Lawrence Hardy and Diane Kuntchke. The last one, August seventeenth to the twentieth.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Okay, good. Motion, second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the, and ratify the filing seminar request and payments per the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to approve item eight on the agenda hiring of Michael Torres of Edwardsville to the open part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? Yes?
How far is Edwardsville from here? What would you say?
Probably about thirty to forty-five minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
I think we got number nine right. It says transfer.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to approve item nine on the agenda to approve the transfer of Sharon Depew from the accounts payable payroll check processing in Commissioner's office to the Treasurer's office at a rate of nineteen seventy-seven. At the same rate, benefits according to the government mandates. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item ten on the agenda, ratify termination of Michael Nicolotti, correctional officer to jail, questions or comments?
How long did he work, Michael Nicolotti?
No, I couldn't tell you.
Can we just, the award, he's here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven?
Motion to approve item number eleven is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve item eleven on the agenda by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to ratify termination Melissa Reed, correctional officer to jail. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number twelve is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item twelve on the agenda, ratify termination of Kyle Alsworth from the correctional officer at the jail, questions or comments? Yes?
So you have three terminations of correctional officers in this agenda, and we've been having that for a while, like terminations, it seems?
Well, resignations.
Resignations, terminations? Oh, so just wondering, is there some kind of a special stressful difficulty there for correctional officers, they can't keep their jobs?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Still carry.
Motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to approve item thirteen on the agenda to exonerate the tax claim bureau for collecting delinquent taxes for the Gibson parcel, so stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Still carry.
Make a motion to approve item number fourteen is listed on your agenda.
We look that over?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the maintenance agreement between Suscano County and Top Copy for the copper at the correctional facility. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Who's gonna be on this committee? What's that about?
I think you're in the name of Congress.
County tick-borne disease task force, or what are they gonna do?
I think you need to be on it.
Absolutely.
They're gonna eliminate all the ticks in Suscano County?
Well, since the state of the country is the worst state in the country for ticks at this point.
Yeah, what are we gonna do about it?
The state's pushing to get everybody together and trying to work.
Asking to the task force to determine.
To educate people and make sure everybody's aware of what's going on and what they should be doing.
Call the doctor.
How long's it gonna last? Who's gonna be on it?
Well, that's what we gotta establish after we get it approved.
Just me.
Who's that, is this something from the state?
Yeah, this came up from the state and from.
C-CAP.
C-CAP.
Do you wanna read it?
The fact that it came from the state bothers me, I don't know when it started doing anything. Now, go ahead and do your thing. We'll make this easy.
I'll make a motion to approve item number fifteen is listed on your agenda.
You better second it there, Chairman.
I'll second it. Questions or comments?
How do you volunteer to be on the committee?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
I'd like to be on the committee also, and I'd like to know any information on why it's become so bad in Pennsylvania. Like in our county, like when I moved here twenty-five years ago, there was no ticks that I noticed or heard about, and now there's so many. Have you heard any reason for it?
That's part of what the scripts are revealing, doing, working out. Okay, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Yes? Yes?
Aye.
I said no.
I wrote down, you said no. Okay, item sixteen?
Motion to approve item number sixteen is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco saying by Commissioner Warren to adopt the resolution twenty fifteen oh six, the designation of agent for update to the county hazard mitigation plan. Questions or comments? Yes?
What is it, can you explain more what the hazard mitigation?
In a short term, the hazard mitigation deals with all disasters, man-made and natural, coming down. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item seventeen?
If we had a pocket knife, don't.
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen is listed on the.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren saying by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item seventeen to open the sealed request proposal for the IP camera system.
What's the IP? What's the IP camera system? Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
It deals with technology.
Where's it going?
It connects to the, well, replaces all the old cameras in the courthouse and the system.
We're redoing the whole thing, right?
Going away from the DVRs and old tape drives to IP addresses and.
Which would be Internet protocol.
Right.
That's IP system.
Is it?
Yes.
Good to you show up today.
That's, yeah. We got a state.
New era security, Waymark PA. Forty-nine thousand, seven oh four, twenty-five. The Tri-M Group LLC, Kennet Square. Oh, boy. Take the crack, Jack Fox. Let's go with the skinny one first. I think it's eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, and then there's a domestic relations add, add-on, alternative number one price for another two thousand seventy dollars. And then another domestic relations add for fifty-five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Now let's see if this goes with that. I don't know what all this is. Let's charge this extra for the bid for all this. Just wanna make sure there's nothing else in here. Okay, the Gaia Communications, Plymouth. Boy.
This is ridiculous.
The prices in here somewhere.
You want a couple?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause I have, I have a few of them.
The second, Michael, the second package goes with those. Magnificent.
No, well.
You should just throw that one out, just on principle.
Sixty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents. What do we got here? Add-on of another nineteen hundred and forty-four dollars. Domestic related, okay, they're all domestic relations options. Option one. Okay? Domestic relations, option two. Twenty-five hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Send Mark to the consultant in the open. All right, this time we have public comment.
I'd like to have some more information about the water line that's being proposed, how is that developing right now?
There's no change since the last meeting.
And is the water line going from the jail to the Bendix building also?
That's a possibility, it's not a guarantee at this point.
And who owns the Bendix building?
It's owned by Honeywell right now.
And is there any kind of a water well that's functioning at the Bendix building?
No.
Has that been polluted by the chemicals from Bendix?
Yeah, all the groundwater at that site was contaminated at one time.
And is it still contaminated?
Well, they don't have a clear user water there yet, but they do have a clear to go ahead and build there.
To build what, more of a building?
Buildings.
And was that ever considered a superfund area? A site, superfund site?
Can't remember off the top of my head, I think, I don't know, it was never on the superfund site as far as I remember.
And from what you know, has it been fully cleaned so that people can put in a water well?
No, that's what you said, that the water still is unsafe to drink there.
The water is still not safe, so that means what, the aquifer in that area is somehow compromised?
Yes.
And that would include the jail area?
No, the jail is outside of the, the plume area.
So, I'm still trying to understand why you need, instead of putting like a new water well for the jail, why we need a water line?
Because of the depth of the wells at the jail and the inability to keep water through the summer, because they have a tendency, and could dry up. It's better to get out of the water business and the testing and the storage tanks and all of that at the jail, and go through the water system.
Instead of just putting a whole new one, a deeper well, so that it wouldn't dry out?
Right.
And so I'd like to know also, can you still have some kind of a task force to look into water lines for families who are suffering the contaminated water from gas drilling that has been verified by the DEP? Like in Dimmock and Lennox, we have whole groups of families.
No, that's up with the DEP and the state legislators to handle.
So it's not something you think you as a county can do with the Act thirteen money or any other funds?
Any other public comments?
Motion.
Mr. E.
I have a question. As Chairman of the Democratic Party, I sent a letter to commissioners requesting use of large courtroom, and I got a phone call that it couldn't be approved, then I got a letter from commissioners from the acting chief clerk saying that it's policy, that it should be only used for, get the right word here, official proceedings. I asked about the policy, and I asked Commissioner Warren about the policy, and I got an email from her that said, there is no policy. So I was a little confused as to, does one commissioner not know what the policy is, or is the chief clerk sending out, you know, where is this policy, or when did it get adopted? Got a little confusion there as to what the policy is.
Well, I don't think there's an actual written policy, do you?
No, you want one? Make a motion to adopt the policy that the county facilities only be utilized for county agencies.
County facilities, including the county office building?
Yep.
No, you can't do that, 'cause you got children and youth out there, you got big brothers, big sisters in there.
We rent space to them.
Right.
As part of the service to the county.
Right.
I mean, as public, the planning commission, them.
The library uses it sometimes. They used to use it. Used to use children.
Okay, I got a motion, I'll second, pre-discussion, any discussion on that?
Also, economic development, don't they use some of that space?
County agencies. Under, 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 economic development.
Well, can you, can we consider allowing citizens to use the citizen groups, whether it's like Democratic Party or something else, since we pay taxes here, that we can use the county facilities for meetings? And why not?
Because that's not what the motion is.
Could we, could we define county facilities?
Courthouse, county office building, any other building owned by the county.
So it's not facilities, it's buildings.
Well.
You're a lawyer.
Same thing with me.
Go ahead, give me the word, is it?
I'll make it as broad and general as we can.
That nobody can use except county.
It's county facilities, that's, yeah.
So it's any county facility?
Building. Any other words you wanna think about?
Well, I'm just, I'm waiting for you to pass it so I can say, okay, from now on, you're not gonna use the green for any.
It's not a building.
That's, that's facility.
The green what?
Green, that's owned by the county.
Oh, the green is owned by the county?
Of course, then we got a road, which is a facility.
I think, I think it should be secured.
What now?
Secured facility.
Well, that's the problem, the reason for it is the sheriff's.
Well, if, if that's your motion, maybe it should include secured facility, because the green is not secured.
How about buildings?
Are you running your motion?
I'm in the motion for buildings, how's that?
And I've got a question as to, if you're talking about security, is that, I mean, that sounds reasonable, is that, is that the reason, security?
Every time we open leads, a sheriff has to have deputies here.
'Cause you have to worry about security.
Hey, do we really? Do we think any terrorists gonna bring bombs in?
Let's wait.
Probably not, but they gotta be here.
But somebody did try to bring a gun in.
There was a gun in one of them one time.
In that vein, talking about security, I stood out here just this morning, it's just a sore spot on me. You know, I watched a guy come in, didn't even go through the, wasn't even close, he's got a big case with it.
Probably a bomb center.
I don't know.
Hand grenades, knives.
Probably I had one, and when I had to go through it. My concern there is, if you're gonna use security as a reason, which is a valid reason, aren't the rules the rules for everybody?
Should be.
I would think.
The answer is yes, which is why you see us go through that security every time I come in.
So why isn't happening?
They brought up before, good question, and we bring it up, everybody goes through.
Responsible for that.
Sure.
Sheriff's.
He just told me that he's, you know, he has to follow directions.
Oh.
Oh, no, he's in charge of the security. And your issue about everybody going through has been brought up before.
Absolutely.
This just rubs you the wrong way, when you've been here for all your life, and all of a sudden some.
You're a terrorist, they better check you for guns and knives, and yeah, I don't disagree with you.
I ain't got a problem being checked as long as you're.
Ah, you know.
But because you might be a lawyer in there, you can allow them to walk around.
Well, actually.
Some say they're the ones that need the closest watching.
We sat there, we asked the guard, okay, and he said, well, they're lawyers.
I have no offense to the other.
There's people you wanna trust.
But they work for lawyers.
Or they work, that would be better, they work for lawyers.
They're not a lawyer, but they work for a lawyer. Can you add to the resolution that everybody should be checked through the security?
We're gonna bring it up to the sheriff right after this meeting. Good.
Thank you.
What about the conservation district?
They're not part of our, they're not a county agency, they rent from us.
Right.
So how does that make that different from the brother and sister?
Same thing, they rent from us.
So they can use it?
Yeah, it's part of the rental agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So can't we just rent a room, that's rental agreement? You rent a room, pay for it.
No, that's different.
Not the courthouse.
But then that opens you up to, can Farm Bureau use a room to meet if you have a, a state legislator come in, at times they've held meetings here? They're not county agencies. I'm just, you know.
The commissioner's hosting that.
I think you're opening yourself up to a bunch of.
Well, it depends on who's hosting the meeting, whether Farm Bureau's hosting the meeting, or the commissioners are hosting the meeting. And right now, we have a pending on meeting, and commissioners are hosting that meeting. And even though Farm Bureau's running the meeting, the commissioners are hosting the meeting.
So you gotta get commissioners, their own private little place.
So now with your, your renter agreements, so if Farm Bureau wants to meet, and, you know, can they do it through conservation, or?
Well, conservation, if conservation has an agreement with us, which they do, and they're using the facilities, if they bring Farm Bureau into their, into their meeting, that's fine.
That has to be their.
But it has to be their meeting, they're responsible for it. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Can you give us an update on the road situation and bridges?
Hang on, I got a motion. All in favor on this motion?
Aye.
Nay.
Yes?
Can you give us an update on the roads and bridges since the last meeting, since two weeks ago, how are things going?
Yeah, there's been a lot of improvement, one sixty-seven's been, most of that's been paved, they're working on it again today, seven oh six west has been completed. Seven oh six east, they've already started doing the edges of the road, so that's getting ready to be done. They've also got some work done over on West Main going out of Suscana and Brushville Road, so they are making, getting some of the work done.
Now, are they going to actually pave over one sixty-seven south after they've been doing those patching?
Yeah, if you go down it now, they've already got, most of it already paved.
And what about seven oh six east? Would that be fully paved too?
That's supposed to be paved also.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. I was going to ask too, I was reading about Bradford County and the Rocket Courier. The commissioners are considering a royalty suit, a super royalties as a county because of all the low payments and it's been getting worse and worse. Are you considering any of that or are you in contact with the commissioners of Bradford County to compare notes?
Well, actually, I talked to one of the commissioners this morning from Bradford County, and actually, there was a movement yesterday, I think it's Hospital thirteen twenty-two, that is coming out of committee and going to the floor for a vote, or is supposed to be going to the floor for a vote, which deals with the minimum royalty bill. So, that's what I think they're all waiting on right now to see what happens with that.
Isn't that Hospital thirteen fifty-one?
Maybe it's thirteen fifty-one, I can't remember.
Have you guys ever asked a resolution supporting any of that legislation, have you?
Can you pass some kind of a resolution supporting that legislation? Would you want to consider something like that?
Well, all the legislators already know where we stand on all of this, we've been very vocal about it.
And do you know why Bradford County has more of a problem than we do?
It's because they have different gas companies they're working with.
Speaking of, I want to talk about impact money. Four years ago, there was a candidate, it's like where all three of you were at, and the question was brought up about what, we had, there was no impact. My question was, what are we going to do about, if we do get this money? And all three of you had different answers. Michael said it wasn't ever going to happen. You said that you were going to establish, your idea was establish public committees to determine or to make recommendations on how to handle that money, and Marianne didn't answer at all. So, my question is, since we're ready for another four years, two of your candidates, you apparently haven't done that the last four years, is there any information you might do it after, four years later than you said you would?
Well, the idea is right now, once we get the county financial situation under control and the, the assets under control, then once that money frees up, then it'll be, especially like this year, I think this year, we're looking at, you know, doing something with the volunteer organizations, the fire departments and ambulance crews, looking at, see what we can do to work with them. Of course, we do something with them every year. We provide them with equipment as well as phone banks and things like that, so this year, we're looking at trying to do something a little different with them. But I can't speak for the other candidates, but as far as myself, our major concern at this point is still our nine-one-one center, which is a seven million dollar bill to fix. Once we can get through that hurdle and, and get that last asset resolved, then, yeah, then, you know, looking at different things we can do with the funding as far as promoting, we are looking at the water line project of infusing that with part of Act 13 money. We are also looking at industrial park studies to see what we can do there. So, there's all kinds of possibilities at this point, but right now, the major concern that I think is on the table is the nine-one-one center and trying to address that shortfall, especially with the lack of nine-one-one funding coming out of Harrisburg.
Okay, so the public input thing that you, that you promoted four years ago is a little different, you're going to create the input.
Well, you know, everything changes as you go through it, you know, don't think that we, we'd get a report back from the, from the consultant saying our nine-one-one center was totally outdated and ready to shut down and might only be functioning for another year or two. So, you know, that's, that changes everything.
That sort of explains the process. Another question on, on your impact money, and you and I attended, none of the others here were, had a meeting in Wyson's a few years ago, and they explained to us what the rules and ranks were as far as reporting.
Right.
I'm not telling you here to see how you spent the money, but I look up on, on your website, you've got those reports, and based on those reports, you haven't spent a nickel of money in two and a half years.
No, that's not true.
I understand that. After I look at the budget...
And that's one of the arguments I've had with, with Harrisburg and with the PUC is their reporting documents are flawed because you're only reporting in the year you receive the money. You don't report what happens to that money if you spend it the year later. So, the problem is, is like any good financial institution would do, we're not sure how much money we're going to get for the year, so we don't budget what we're going to do with the money until we can get the money, find out how much we're getting. It's hard to say, "Well, let's spend six million dollars," well, we don't know if we're getting six million dollars. So, the year we receive it, it all goes into capital reserve until the following year where it's budgeted through our budgeting process and used through a budget process.
So, then you haven't spent any money the last year and a, well, the previous year and a half.
You're asking, what did we really do with the money?
Well, yeah, well, I'm...
What I'm asking you is how transparent are you? You know, he used the phrase, "This is a license to steal," and he's right.
No, it's not. I doubt it's not. Let me explain to you why. There is a list of things in Act 13 that we can use the money for.
Very broad, thirteen items.
Very broad. We have taken advantage of the broadness.
Right.
We rob Peter to pay Paul.
So, every account that we have, Act 13 has its own separate account, we have an individual that does, that spends most of her time tracking the Act 13 funding as to where it's spent and how it's spent to make sure it falls within the categories. And we've got reports that we just sent back to, I think it was one of the colleges and one was to C cap as to actual, how the money was spent for the last three years.
We've all gotten that information. Because just for, why I'm asking you is, nobody is doing that reporting. The rules are the rules, even if they're bad rules.
Right.
And your reports show no expenditures for any year since three years ago.
Well, that's absolutely true because the year we received the money, we didn't spend it.
But you spent it the next year.
But you don't report it that way.
That's not how the state requires you to do it.
The state doesn't require you to report it that way. I've been on the phone with PUC discussing this issue many times, matter of fact, I've taken two webinars with them going over the reporting function, and I've also got their manual printed out where it says real specific, you only report the year that you receive the funds. You don't report anything after that year.
So, you can just keep pushing along?
Well, that's the policy of, of the transparency of it, is that you can't see how it was spent because there is no reporting document to show how the money actually finally got spent.
Isn't that sad? People talk about transparent government, just don't know why they buy that.
Do you want me to finish answering your real question now?
Yeah.
Act 13 has a list of things that we can spend money on. So, what we have done, and as you say, it's very broad, we can use it for law enforcement. Well, that's a sheriff's office, DA's office. Let's say it costs five million dollars to run the sheriff's office. We can spend Act 13 money to fund the sheriff's office, save the general fund dollars that we would have normally spent, and what we've done is fully funded the pension. That's how we utilize the money, that's all in the budget, it is all transparent. What I don't disagree with is the fact, the way the state has analyzed that, has us report it. You can't see any of that.
It's not transparent, that's right.
But that's why we're telling you, and we do it in our budget. Five million, that's free general fund money up that we can spend any way we like, which is to reduce your taxes every year for the last eight years, fully fund the pension, the only county in the state with a fully funded pension, to the benefit of all the taxpayers. That's the real answer.
Plus, by allowing us to use it for those thirteen items like judicial and a few of the other ones, that allowed us to free up the revenue to take and do the five million dollar renovation project.
Everybody's done that, but I guess my point, it's not necessarily going to complain with you, but why can't you report the expenses? Because I followed your trail on your reports, and based on those reports, you should have like ten and a half million dollars to bank. And then you look into your budget and it's like, now wait, this says six million dollar carryover.
Right. And that's the, and that's the biggest argument the senators had in, in Harrisburg when I was down there testifying, was that they have no understanding what's going on with the impact fee because they have nothing to look at. Because the way the PUC is reporting it, the senators have no clue what's going on with the money. So, that's why they invested in having somebody do, a consulting group, a college, go out and do a study to find out how this money's actually getting spent because the reporting isn't done the way it should be. Now, you would think that the easiest thing to do would be for the PUC to say, "Okay, we're going to change the way you report this so we don't have to pay somebody else a bunch of money to take and get a report that we should already have to begin with."
That people should be able to get to without having to go through, I think your, your budget's two hundred or three hundred pages and trying to figure out, you know.
But good luck with that.
Yeah. Well, you know, hey, that's my money too. It's not just your three's money, it's county money, and we all have opinions on why we should do things. There's nothing wrong with having a discussion on how that happens as opposed to having it in some room in the courthouse that now the public can only come to if they're at official function. So, yeah, transparency is a good thing, no matter who's promoting.
It's the only way to do it, it keeps everybody out of trouble. He asks questions, he give you the answers, you know? Nothing wrong with that.
And actually, the spreadsheets we're putting together now, eventually will go on the webpage to show from day one how the funding's been spent.
There you go. You, you forget about the rest of the state.
Right. Well, I can't wait for the state to do what they're supposed to do.
Good luck with that.
Can you tell us what the balance is approximately of Act 13 money now in, in the county, for the county?
With what? We've just committed maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's it? It's under a million? So, when is the next check supposed to come in?
I think it's August it comes in.
Now, at this point, because the, the whole industry is much, is doing much less, like even Cabot is supposedly pulled back forty percent of their development, so the checks are going to be much less.
No, actually, this year, the checks in Suscana County were higher than they were last year.
But eventually, if they're pulling back, maybe the next check will be lower?
Listen, I've said since day one, eventually it will get lower, eventually it's going to go away. At some point, this money's going to be gone. So, if you're using it for your operations and to, and to hire more people and pay them higher salaries, you're going to have a void to fill at some point in time.
So, the next check you feel is going to still be sufficient check?
Well, I already have the number, the number's higher than it was last year.
Oh, so what's the number that you have?
It's just over six million dollars.
That's just for the county, and then all the townships get their checks?
Right. With all the townships and everything, I think it was a little over almost seventeen million.
With the townships?
Yeah.
Suscana County is the largest county received, right?
I thought Bradford.
No, I thought Bradford. I think Washington was, I'd have to double check it, but I think Washington is still the highest.
So, then Bradford might be next and we might be...
Bradford was still over us, but they're continuing to decline each year.
Springville was the highest municipality bringing in money in the state.
Right.
Was that really, it wasn't eight hundred thousand, was it? It was an eight hundred thousand in one of your articles.
Yeah.
It is eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred and fifty, I think it was eight hundred fifty-eight or eight hundred fifty-three thousand.
That's for Springville, so it's not quite a million for Springville then.
Right.
Motion to adjourn.
Any other question? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.